Santa help me say, Santa help me say, I wish for Christmas day. Santa, 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 Santa. Snow is falling down, lights are all around, oh, everybody's ready for a real good time. Santa stop rapping what you got me, I just got one wish tonight. I got grandparents go to the TV, I got children running around my feet. Santa stop, won't you listen up, wandering on the list that lie. I don't need anything beneath the Christmas tree. There'll be jingle bells jingling, the choir will be singing, and it's all gonna happen on a one woman's name. Santa, Santa, Santa help me say, Santa, Santa, my wish for Christmas day. Santa, Santa, Santa help me say, Santa, Santa, my wish for Christmas day.
Birmingham, today is Tuesday, December 13th, the time is 9:33 a.m. A call to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council.
We thank you so much for this season of the advent of your son Jesus. This Christmas season where we're reminded the fact that you have compassion, that you care, that you love us. And Father, you have invested in our lives and you so much want to be involved in every aspect of our life. And you have a plan for each of us. So thank you, Father. Now, I pray for our mayor, our city council, Father, I pray for those elected officials, those who serve in government. Father, our community leaders, Father, I pray wisdom for them as they make decisions that affect us. And Father, give them wisdom to lead us and guide us, give them a heart of compassion and courage and conviction. So Father, we want to support them, we thank you for them. These are men and women that you've placed in leadership in government. And our responsibility is to support them. So Father, we lift them up in prayer to you today. Father, I pray your blessing on this meeting today, dear God, and just bless us. Thank you for all your blessings and we just do this, pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Phila flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cooper, for that prayer. You remind us, it's not always our plan, it's God's. Thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Morning, Councilmember Ocoyan. Councilmember Tate.
Good morning.
Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Councilmember Woods. Council President Pro Tim Smithman. Good morning, Council President Ellon.
Good morning, thank you very much. At this time, councilors, I'd like to entertain a motion and a second for approval of minutes from the previous meetings of June 21st and June 28th, 2022. Santa.
The voting should be open right about now. Councilmember Williams, how'd you like to vote?
Yeah.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
All right, and...
Thank you, councilors, those minutes from June 21st and June 28th approved. The minutes are not ready for the meet of July 5th, 2022 through December 6th, 2022. At this time, we have communications from the mayor, chiefs.
Yes, Mayor.
Communication, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, and Pro Tim, members of the council, and members of the public. Good to see you all today. Have a few announcements, I'll be succinct, Madam President. First of all, on behalf of Mayor Whitson and the city of Birmingham, we'd like to offer our sincere condolences to Dr. Mark Wilson, Health Officer for the Jefferson County Department of Health. He shared publicly that he lost his daughter, Ms. Laura Wilson Colker. Services were held in her honor on Monday. Dr. Wilson's family has asked that in lieu of flowers, that donations be made to the Birmingham Crisis Center. And our thoughts and prayers are with him and his family. Madam President, councilors, public, the late Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth is a civil rights icon and our hometown hero. Many of you may have heard Mayor Whitson talk about that as his personal hero. The pastor and civil rights activist literally put his body on the line in the fight against segregation during the Birmingham movement. On Thursday, December 15th, the documentary Shuttlesworth will be screened at the Carver Theater located at 1631 Fourth Avenue North. The event is presented by Alabama Public Television and is free to the public. The reception will begin at 6:00 p.m., followed by the film screening at 7:00 p.m. Shuttlesworth will also air on Alabama Public Television on Tuesday, December 20th at 8:00 p.m. Next up, Madam President, members of the council, for residents who are among the 20,000 new uniform garbage cart owners, please remember that trash bags must be placed inside the cart and not beside them. We know that there's been a lot of discussion about this. Also, uniform garbage cart owners must put their bins in front of their home and not in the alleyways. For more information, go to birminghamal.gov/pickup. Next, Madam President, members of the council, in continuation of our celebration of the holiday season, the city of Birmingham will host a menorah lighting on Monday, December 19th, from 4:30 to 5:30 p.m. on Short 20th Street. So we're inviting all of our citizens to please come out and take part. Last but certainly not least, Madam President, we have a special proclamation that we'd like to present. We know that for those who are in the chambers, they can see a dynamic group of young folks here. So at this time, we'd ask Counselor Clinton Woods if he would join us at the podium, and Superintendent Mark Sullivan, School Board President, Ms. Deontay Williams, and all of this dynamic contingent from Martha Gaskins Elementary to please join us at the podium. We also see Dr. Gwen Tillman, please join us as well. Madam President, members of the council, members of the public, we've had the awesome opportunity to celebrate the prowess of our young people in our city over the last few weeks. And last week, we got to celebrate athletic prowess, this week, we get to celebrate some academic prowess as well. Proverbs 22:6 says, "Train up a child on the way he should go; when he is old, he will not depart from it." The key word is training. And we've had some amazing training going on in our city. Today, we have future engineers, computer programmers, and scientists right here in this building. It's my pleasure to present a proclamation on behalf of Mayor Whitson, who we know has a heart for young people. He certainly wanted to be here for this part of the presentation. But we want to celebrate this morning the Martha Gaskins Elementary School Robotics Team. They are the reigning Eastern U.S. Champions of the Fall 2022 Coder Z League. I ain't even get to finish it, all right. We'll certainly get to hear from the leadership and from these dynamic young people soon. But we'd like to hear from our esteemed superintendent, Dr. Herbert Blackman, who is the principal of the school, Assistant Principal, Dr. Taylor Green, and their robotics coach, Dr. Verma. Before then, we'd like to ask Counselor Clinton Woods if he please come up. Certainly, he's the counselor for this, for the district that the school resides in, so Counselor Woods.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, just excited to have the opportunity to celebrate our young students anytime they're able to really achieve anything. But something like this that really goes over and beyond, really requires, you know, additional eyes. Last week, we were able to have one of our state championship football teams in. And I got a call from Ms. Patina Bird Giles and said, hey, we need to make sure we celebrate all of our students' accomplishments with the same level of intensity. And so excited to have this group here. You know, each of you have really worked together as a team to get something done. And we want to make sure you continue that going forward, just knowing that working together, you have what it takes to win, but working together, you can achieve at even higher levels. So we want to continue to celebrate the job that the students are doing, but also the job our administrators and principals doing there. And just look forward to bigger and better things, so continue to work. We have a resolution for you that we will not read right now. But we'll go ahead and hear from a few more speakers. But just want to congratulate you and encourage you guys to continue the good work in leading the way out in District 1.
Thank you, counselor. We'll hear from our superintendent, our esteemed principal, and also, we need to hear from the coach and maybe superintendent from one or two of these dynamic young people.
Thank you, Ms. Sparks, Madam President. You know, I am very proud of the work that's happening in Birmingham City Schools. Last week, we recognized our football team, and now we're recognizing our scholars. Success truly does start in Birmingham City Schools, and this is an example of that. I am so proud of our teacher, he is a first-year teacher. And I was telling him how aggressive and how, you know, innovative he is to have our students involved in something like this. And now we have a national championship amongst our young scholars, our engineers, our scientists, mathematicians. And all of these students in this one little project, they had to collaborate, they had to do math, they had to do science, and they had to do computer programming or coding, things that, you know, when I was in school, probably was something that you just saw in science fiction, and now our children are doing this every single day. So I want to bring Dr. Blackman up, the principal of the school, and then our teacher, that's who I want to hear from, and these amazing students that we have with us today. Dr. Blackman.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan, and good morning to our mayor, council members, and of course, Chief of Staff. Thank you for your presentation to us this morning. We are truly humble and thankful this morning. And as you know, as we prepare to move past the pandemic COVID-19, we definitely celebrate our students, we continue to give them the opportunity to close the achievement and opportunity gap. And as we continue to do that in Birmingham City Schools, we know more students and definitely more teachers will have the opportunity to show their excellence that's truly here in the district. We want to thank you this morning for recognizing and joining us as we celebrate our wonderful students, their accomplishments, scholars, of course, our superintendent, Dr. Sullivan, for the great support that he's provided all year long. Dr. Verma, his leadership as a teacher. And most importantly, our students, again. Robotics, coding, and more STEM activities will continue to be the trademark at Martha Gaskins Elementary School. So here stands a proud principal, it's not about me, but it's about my scholars and the teacher that led the way. So at this time, I would like to defer to Dr. Uvraj Verma.
Hi, I'm Dr. Uvraj Verma, a fifth-grade teacher at Martha Gaskins Elementary School. Thank you all for recognizing and celebrating our very bright students this morning. It truly takes a village, so we're not only thankful for the awesome people at the Birmingham City School System who recognize our students, but we are also appreciative of all of you, the elite members of the city of Birmingham. I think this competition was a great opportunity because they got to apply a lot of the content that they learned in school, like decimals, measuring distance, measuring angles. So we live in like a fast-paced society because of technology. So having exposure and opportunities to participate and immerse themselves in the STEM world is very advantageous to children. Our next hope is to go to the Kennedy Space Center so the kids have more opportunities and exposure. So we're raising $10,000, and if anyone's able to kindly donate, the school's number is 205-231-9200. And I want to again say thank you to all of you for recognizing our very intelligent, zealous, and hard-working students Cedric Jones, Rajay Wellman, Fernando Gonzalez Rosali, Slameek Johnson, Ashley Garcia James, Kaylee Underwood, Jackson Vasquez, Raheem Washington, Chanel Cooley, Nakaya Makonico, and Nevea Roland. Thank you so much, have a blessed holiday season.
It's a great coach that advocates for their team and also introduces them, because I saw some, I'm like, whoa. We also have our esteemed School Board President here, Madam President. So we'd like to ask Ms. Deontay Williams to please come up and have a few words. Ms. Williams?
Good morning, and listen, I'm so excited, this is a grand opportunity. It's a great day in Birmingham City Schools. On behalf of my colleagues and I, we are incredibly proud of you young people. You are our future, we say this all the time, we are so thrilled, we know we are making the right investments, the right decisions, and you all have proven that to us today. First-year teacher, you must be the Teacher of the Year, Martha Gaskins. Dr. Blackman, you're doing a phenomenal job. It's awesome to just be able to serve alongside Dr. Sullivan and the city of Birmingham. This is a collective effort, we are really, really proud today. You all already said it, last week, we recognized our athletes, and today, it's about the scholars. And this is just a small nugget of what's happening in Birmingham City Schools. And you all will begin to see more and more of the highlights that's happening all across the city of Birmingham in our 43 schools. And I'm super excited because this is District 2 or 1.2 or somewhere in between. But this is a school that falls in my district, so I'm incredibly excited for you all, and thank you for what you've done. This is only the beginning, God has so much more in store for you and your futures. And so I want you all to know that you have everything inside of you that you need to become the next coder for the world, the next engineer for the world, the next mathematician. And what's really important is that all of these people in this room and this listening audience, we're depending on you. And that's a lot of weight, but we are depending on you and we believe in you, so keep going. Thank you so much, city of Birmingham, Mayor Whitson, Dr. Sparks here, Dr. Sparks, for allowing us to come and share with you all this morning, thank you.
So I know that Counselor Woods noted that he had a resolution as well, Madam President, as we prepare to close two more things. One, we want to recognize the dynamic parents and supporters of these young people that are here. So we ask parents, if you could, please stand. And again, Mayor Whitson, certainly, this is one of the highlights of his role as mayor, where he gets to celebrate and advocate on behalf of our young people. So I'll read this proclamation, we're in the presence of national champions. And we certainly should take this time and pause and really salute these young people. Because in about 15 years, we're gonna all want to say we knew them. City of Birmingham proclamation says, whereas every day, the administration, teachers, parents, and volunteers at Martha Gaskin Elementary School works to develop and empower students to be well-rounded, global-minded, responsible citizens, and lifelong learners. And whereas, an example of the school's impact was recently seen when newly hired math and science teacher, Dr. Verma, decided to start a robotics team at the school. It was an idea that Principal Dr. Herbert Blackman and Assistant Principal Dr. Taylor Green welcomed. And whereas, every day, a team of fifth graders, fifth-grade students committed time to learn to program a computer robot using codes to complete virtual missions and challenges. And then recently, they entered a national virtual robotics competition and beat more than 60 other schools from Louisiana to New York. They were the only school from Alabama in the contest. And, and whereas, the winning team, known as the Robotic Griffins, earned the title of Eastern U.S. Robotics Champion of the Fall 2022 Coder Z League Robotics Competition. Another team from the school, known as Mr. Verma's Number One Kids, actually placed 12th in the competition as well. And whereas, yeah, that's great, let's salute them too. And whereas, both teams have now set their sights on another goal, Dr. Verma shared this, and that is a visit to the Kennedy Space Flight Center in 2023. They are raising money for that trip. And whereas, since earning the national title, excitement around robotics has spread to younger students. The school's fourth graders have told Dr. Verma that they cannot wait to join the team when they are fifth graders in the fall. And whereas, the city of Birmingham is proud to celebrate Martha Gaskins Elementary School for their recent accomplishments. They represented their school and Birmingham well. Now therefore, I, Mayor Randall Whitson, Mayor of the city of Birmingham, Alabama, do hereby issue this proclamation in honor of the Martha Gaskins Elementary Robotics Team. I'd ask everybody in the chambers, let's celebrate with an awesome round of applause these dynamic young people. I have a proclamation that I will present to both the coach and the principal. We'll take one quick picture, and Madam President, we'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, and Counselor Woods, did you have to, something you want to continue with?
We will be presenting the resolution out in the hall, but we do have something for each of our scholars. So if y'all step out in the hall, we have something very special for each of you.
Thank you very much, we're very excited to have the students, the teachers, members of the board here with us today. Hold on one second, I think we have some councilors that wanted to say something.
Counselor Moore?
I just, I just wanted to say congratulations to you all. It's crazy, because you know, I'm looking at you and I'm like, oh, man, they're good at robotics, but they also can dress too. I see a bow tie up there, you know. But in all seriousness, this is what, you know, a good partnership between parents and teachers and the school system looks like. We are building, or the school is able to build on the foundation that you all have built, parents. And so I applaud you, I thank you for being here and supporting these young people the way that you do. And to you all, I just wanted to read this quote, because, I mean, I was thinking about it as you all were standing here. Here's to the crazy ones, the misfits, the rebels, the troublemakers, the round pigs and the square holes, the ones who see things differently, they're not fond of rules, and they have no respect for the status quo. You can quote them, disagree with them, glorify them, vilify them, about the only thing you can't do is ignore them because they change things, they push the human race forward. And while some may see them as the crazy ones, we see genius. Because the people who are crazy enough to think they can change the world are usually the ones who do. And I believe that that is an embodiment of who you all are. You are going to make our city better, and we greatly, greatly appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Tim?
So I have one question, are they getting a pizza party? They are, can we get invited? I want pepperoni pizza, thank you, okay. But I just want to tell you guys, I'm so proud of you, and I want you guys to keep up, you know. I know you're gonna go to middle school, and middle school's gonna be scary, and people are gonna try to sway you somewhere different. But I want you to keep up robotics, I think that's really cool. And we're just so proud of you, I can't wait to see what you guys are gonna do in STEM in the future years. Congratulations to Counselor Woods, it's really huge to have that in your district. Dr. Sullivan, I'm really proud to see that we are having a lot of positivity, as our School Board President was saying, out to kids. You know, we hear so much about the negative things about our kids of color, but we have to really make sure we highlight them and encourage them, and the parents, thank you for keeping up with them, encouraging them. You know, I know you guys gotta work, I'm sure you have other kids, but you know, I'm really proud of you all as well. You know, the teachers as well, for you to be so young and to stay in Birmingham and really invest in our kids, I want to say thank you for that. So congratulations, and invite us to class, I would love to learn how to work the robots.
Thank you very much, Counselor Abbott?
I want to say congratulations to all of the young people. But I want to say thank you to Dr. Verma. Because I remember, believe it or not, I remember being a little kid like y'all are. And I remember learning things in school and thinking, what good is this? What am I gonna do with this? Why do I have to learn this? Because, I mean, what's it good for? And the thing that you've done is you've actually put what you've learned in class into physical action where you can see what it's good for. And I think that's so important for young people, I have three grandchildren, they're always saying, why do I have to learn this? Well, there's a reason that you have to learn all this stuff, including proper grammar and punctuation. But there's a reason for it, and there's a reason for everything, but when you're young, you can't always see it. So I want to thank you, Dr. Verma, and I'm sorry if I didn't say your name right, but it takes that innovation, that, you know, thinking ahead and thinking about how a young person is thinking. Because, you know, you have a whole different focus. And being a round pig in a square hole is not a bad thing. So keep that in mind, because lots of folks feel like they don't fit in, and hey, you can be great too, you're just different. So thank you, thank you to all of you, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you again, we're very proud of you collectively as a council. I want to thank Dr. Blackman, I met Dr. Blackman when I was on the board, he was AP at Weston Academy. So glad to see you and what you're doing over there at Martha Gaskins. As you mature and as you age, people look younger and younger every day. So, Dr. Verma, I thought you were one of the students at first, so. One thing I've always wanted to say, I always wanted to be as smart as a fifth grader. But now my challenge is to be as tall as a fifth grader. So I'm just so glad to see what you all are doing. I'm just excited to see the young ladies, along with the young men, we're looking at future scientists and engineers and coders. And so I want you to continue this, as Counselor Pro Tim said, hadn't been to long since she was in the sixth grade. You know, you're going to middle school next year, but look at what you've done so far, just in five years of school. And we're just looking for the best for each of you. And to the parents, thank you, thank you, thank you. This is what we need as a city, for this to start in the home. And the support that our students receive from the parents, it is the foundation of Birmingham. So thank you, thank everyone, thank you. Thank you very much, and we'll allow them to go ahead, they got some picture-taking they want to do, and get back in class.
Can we do the resolution?
That's all right, we got business to take here.
That's for you, see, okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold down the resolution?
Hold the resolution.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselors, just keep in the mode of presentations, without objection, the rules are suspended for the continuation of presentation of speakers. And we do have two additional presentations today, and, um, councilors. We have Counselor Pro Tim, Crystal Smithman, has a presentation and resolution presented for the Librarian of the Year Award.
Good morning, Ms. Reva Williams, will you please come up? Michael Rotnix, the neighborhood president for where the library sits. And is there anyone else that needs to come up, it's just y'all two? What, Janine? And, come on, come on, y'all know who y'all are, come on. So I really wanted to come up here because I am so proud of Ms. Williams. She actually was awarded the 2022 Jefferson County Public Library Association's Librarian of the Year, which is really big. You know, a lot of times, I think, and just to be quite honest and to be transparent, you know, we've heard a lot of things saying the city doesn't care about our libraries, or the libraries need something more. But Ms. Williams is really someone who's taken a little and given a lot. And I want you guys to know about all the things she has done, she does a diaper bank every month. She does food boxes for our senior citizens, and how many, you serve, like 100 to 300 senior citizens every month? We have the mobile market, the grocery store, we have the mobile wellness unit, that's where you can get your blood pressure checked, check to see how your blood sugar is doing, and just mental health services, taxes, she's done everything. She's really has made the library the hub of our community. Our libraries are really the fabric and the cornerstone of our neighborhoods. And I love this library in particular because when I was about four years old, and y'all, I don't know why my mama has walked so far from where we were, but we walked all the way from Santa Street, centerway southwest, all the way to Tinsville Library. I would read my books and drop them off, and so I'm happy to see Ms. Reva really just making sure our library is still very useful. So I have a resolution for you, I'm not gonna read all of it, but I'll read the last bit. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Council of the city of Birmingham, with Mayor Randall Elwooden, pauses the deliberations to... Randall L. Woodfin pauses in its deliberations to congratulate Ms. Reba Williams on being named 2022 Jefferson County Public Library Association Librarian of the Year by the Jefferson County Public Library Association. The Council further commands Ms. Williams for her commitment to serve the community and the needs of our most cherished and valued citizens presented this thirteenth day of December 2022. Thank you. And we'll now have Ms. Williams come up, Ms. Janine, Michael Rotnix.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To the Honorable Mayor Randall Woodfin, the full body city council, and special person to person, thanks to Pro Team President, Crystal Smitherman. Thank you for always supporting the numerous events, as well as the non-traditional and traditional programs implemented at the Tittysville Library. Since becoming the branch manager, my team and I, because it takes a team, have implemented several new programs that have helped transform the Tittysville community. This was geared toward our theme, the library's theme, to engage, educate, and empower the community. Last I leave, I'm very grateful to be recognized with this year's Librarian of the Year Award, but what's even more important is to be able to extrapolate the programs for information disparities. And let me thank my director, Mrs. Janine Langston, and our Deputy Director, Mrs. Corinne Davis West. Again, thank you for this time.
Thank you. I'm Janine Langston, I serve as the Executive Director of the Birmingham Public Library. And on behalf of our Board of Trustees and the Birmingham Public Library, we want to congratulate Reba on this wonderful, um, award, being Librarian of the Year. Uh, it is um, a, a great honor and we are so proud of her. And we want to thank, uh, Pro Tim, uh, Crystal Smitherman for recognizing this and recognizing her today with this award. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't encourage all of you to visit your Birmingham Public Library and take advantage of the wonderful resources, services, uh, available at your Birmingham Public Library. So thank you and happy holidays.
Hello, hi, I'm Corinne Davis, I am the Deputy Director of the Birmingham Public Library. And I just wanted to just tell you a little bit of history, um, concerning Reba and Tittysville. It was a little bit over a year ago that, um, Reba became the head of Tittysville Library. And I will not tell you that she did it with all joy and happiness and this is the place to put me. It was a challenge, because at that particular time, uh, Tittysville wasn't doing the, the very best that it could have been doing. Um, but then Reba took it on and said, I'm gonna change this scenario, I'm gonna look at it, I'm gonna read it, I'm gonna change the box, I'm gonna change this outcome. And like I said, about over a year ago, she did it. She really did it. So we're very proud of her, very happy, very happy to have her as part of our team and we look forward to greater and bigger things. And most of, most of the time, we do have, um, programs at Tittysville, I always see Ms. Smither in there and, um, everyone's supporting, um, supporting the library. So we just thank you and continue, please, support our library.
Good morning, uh, Michael Rotnix, Neighborhood President. Y'all got an excuse, my voice gonna come and go. Uh, we have a phenomenal librarian. She has changed the way we library. We have resources there that, that have never been there. We have partnered with a lot of things that right now, the sky's the limit to our library. Our children are coming back to the library, our seniors at the library, our councilors at the library. When we leave here, we're going to celebrate. Because right now, what you see now, it's the only just beginning. The Tittysville community, I say this once, I say it again, and Councilor Barry, as you know me, we gonna continue to keep our feet on the ground, no matter what sickness or illness we go through. I don't have my uncle with me now, it's just me now. We doing the best we can in North Tittysville and we got the best. We got the best librarian, best school teacher, and now our school, Boogertee Washington, is on the passing list. That's a great accomplishment for our council. People don't look at that. All these things are possible through these people here. They say Michael, it's not Michael, it's Mosiah. But without these people, none of this would be here. So I want to thank them first, and I want to thank the full body council and the mayor. Y'all have done a phenomenal job by letting us do what we need to do in our community. And I'm gonna leave it with that, y'all good there.
Rotnix. Thank you. And also I want to highlight making sure that, I don't know the statistics, but very often, um, Mike, Reba, Janine will make sure our kids have library cards. And you will, every, every day you'll walk into the library, you see somebody on the computer applying for a job, um, you know, doing their homework, everything. And I really want to commend them for staying open late for community events and neighborhood meetings. So thank you, Madam President, for your time.
Right, and our business with the resolution.
Yes, uh, so move. Move for you, C.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Now the resolution?
Move the resolution.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Congratulations on the success. Thank you so much for the award and what you've done for Tittysville. We, few years ago, we were, were there, conversation about another direction for that library. And so we thank you for what you've done and what the executive team have done to make that a better place. Congratulations Deputy Director on your promotion, glad to see that happen for you as well. Thank you all. Thank you. Alright, at this time, we also have a presentation by Councilor Darryl O'Quinn of District Five, and this is a resolution being recognized in the release, it was, um, announced earlier of the Show's Worth documentary, and we have two of the local producers here that we'd like to recognize.
Good morning, Council. Mr. Jay Whitson and, uh, T. Marie King are joining me here at the, at the podium. Uh, this morning, I want to offer a resolution, um, recognizing them for their accomplishments in, um, creating, uh, a new documentary film. Uh, Mr. Jay Whitson is a Emmy Award winning senior producer at Alabama Public Television and T. Marie King, who you probably know is, uh, racial justice and equity activist, activist and trainer here in the city of Birmingham and, and elsewhere. Um, so in, in recognition of Reverend Shuttlesworth's hundred year birth, birthday this year, which was, uh, celebrated last March, um, APT has partnered with, um, Ms. King to create this documentary film. Um, and that film is going to air on Alabama Public Television on Tuesday, December 20th at 8:00 PM. There's a sneak peek preview on Thursday night at the Carver, um, however, it is fully booked. Uh, so those of you who haven't, uh, RSPV, RSVP'd for the, um, premiere at the Carver, um, will have to, uh, wait till it airs on APT. Again, that's December 20th at 8:00 PM. Um, so, uh, I just want to read the last couple of lines of the resolution here today, and then we're gonna have a short, um, trailer for the film, and then I'll welcome, um, Mr. Whitson and Ms. King to, to, to give remarks. To celebrate the hundredth anniversary of his birth, Alabama Public Television presents an original documentary about Birmingham civil rights leader and icon Reverend Shudd, Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth. Shuttlesworth will premiere Tuesday, December 20th at 8:00 PM on Alabama Public Television. Now therefore it be resolved that the city council and, of the city of Birmingham with Mayor Randall L. Woodfin concurring pauses in its deliberations to congratulate Mr. Jay Whitson and Ms. T. Marie King for their vision and paying tribute to one of our own heroes and civil rights icon Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth, which will serve to enlighten and inspire countless viewers as well as demonstrate his determination and fearlessness during the struggle for equality for all citizens. Uh, so I will move for unanimous consent.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'll move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright, and can we roll the trailer, please?
Women's citizenship, very few of the privileges. Everybody pays taxes, if there's a war, we all go to war. But then you realize that your school has one typewriter and another school right down the street almost has roomfuls.
You, you wake up in Jim Crow Birmingham and, you know, you, you, you go to work, you have a job that pays you less.
He, he worked at TC&amp;I, but he just have a job in name. Fifty cents an hour, working with that steel like that, I got sick of it. You get sick.
During that time, we had to get up and give white folk a seat, even if we paid the money. Sometimes you pay your money, you have to get all, go back around, get in on the side door.
The art of segregation limited my thinking of greater depths, higher heights for myself. Because when you treat it as second-class citizen, there are times that you feel like second-class, so you just feel the everyday prejudice.
You wake up in the morning and it's always the same old thing over and over again. The Klan, what, we're paraded, and right there in Smithfield, parade right down with the, with the police leading the procession.
You can understand why people felt we could no longer wait. If you don't bring attention to an unjust law, the law would never be challenged.
Segregation was a thing so sacred in Birmingham and so, so solidly in the minds and the psyche that nobody's supposed to tamper with.
Wherever there was a struggle going on anywhere in the United States, Reverend Shuttlesworth was going to be there.
An ordinary man with an extraordinary call on his life.
When some leader said things, it may or may not happen, but when Fred Shuttlesworth said it, you could depend on it.
You know, I've been called crazy to the point of insanity. And I got disappointed if I hadn't gone to jail. Every so often, I'd begin to get to jailhouse it, it's just life for me.
My man just walked up to a school to take care of his children.
When we pulled up, I thought to myself, Lord have mercy. And they immediately attacked him, brass knuckles, lots of shouting and cursing.
Minutes in hospital, back out fighting again, home got bombed, back out fighting again.
The Klan put his name on the bomb and God erased it off. You know, people don't get saved from the middle of bombs unless God wants them to be saved for some purpose.
Dr. King came in at invitation of Dr. Shuttlesworth, that's why he came to Birmingham. Bull Connor to the city thought they had beaten us down.
He wanted to leave the world better than he found it.
We needed someone in Birmingham who wasn't afraid and we found that man in Fred Shuttlesworth.
Thank you. It's been three years, um, working on this project. Um, it's very humbling and I'm excited that everybody's excited to experience this. Um, the only thing I would say besides, thank you so much for the recognition and the proclamation, um, Councilor O'Quinn and the entire council and the mayor, but, you know, the legacy of Fred Shuttlesworth, I think should be a lesson to all that change takes place with persistence and sacrifice, as well as faith. And I hope that seeing this, seeing this documentary on his life is an inspiration to all that one person can change a community, change a city, change a state, and eventually change the world.
Hello, and I want to thank you all very much for your support of the documentary. I had very, no idea that when I started on this project, I would be standing before you three years later getting a resolution, but I very much appreciate it and we all really do appreciate the city's support and the Civil Rights Institute's support, uh, the library has helped, uh, Eric Essex is actually the composer of all the music in the film, is another great local, uh, resource and, um, and I just really, really appreciate everyone's support and, uh, I'm glad that I can be a small part in finally helping to move Reverend Shuttlesworth's story forward and get it out there. I mean, you know, we all know who Reverend Shuttlesworth is, but I think that he's been overlooked for far too long and I'm glad that we're finally able to present a story. And it's, it's a gigantic story and it's only an hour long, so there, uh, we're gonna put as much as we possibly can in there, but, um, it's, there's a lot to tell and a lot of very important things to, uh, that people need to know about Reverend Shuttlesworth and Birmingham and its role in the civil rights, uh, movement. And I mean, we all know this, but I think not enough people know that if it weren't for Birmingham, I mean, John Kennedy said himself, if it were not for Birmingham, we would not have had the Civil Rights Act. And I'm glad that we are able to finally be able to bring that story to everybody. And I also want to thank T. Marie very much for doing this with me because there's no way that would have happened without her, without, uh, her sage advice and guidance and everything, um, but anyway, thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Hold on one second, Councilor Moore?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say one thing, um, man, that trailer, heavy, heavy, um, really excited about it. Um, and it was also cool, um, seeing Dr. Corey in there, uh, that actually used to be my professor over at UAB. And so really excited to hear about this story, it's so many young people who do not know about Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth. Um, and I think that, you know, we, we lose out on being able to gain that inspiration and for young people to see like, oh, it's okay for me to, you know, um, to be radical, it's different ways for me to be radical, right? Um, and Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth was a very radical man. Um, and so, very excited about this documentary, I'm hoping and praying that this won't be the last one though, uh, because there are several other figures in our city that meant a lot to the civil rights movement and just so many other things that we need to tell the story of. Dr. A.G. Gaskin, you know, uh, Colonel Stonewall, Stonewall Johnson, there's so many different folks. And so, um, really hope that this is not the last one, but I'm excited about this one coming out. Alright.
Thank you very much. Could you give us the dates and times again of the premiere and when it'll be viewed?
The premiere is Thursday at the Carver Theater at 7:00 PM. It's a reception at six o'clock and then film at seven, and then it'll air on APT on December 20th at 8:00 PM.
And does this film, is it in a category where it could be, um, considered as a doc, short documentary?
It's.
Or is it not long enough?
It's, it's a feature-length documentary because it's an hour, a short is usually thirty minutes or less and this is an hour, but I wish it were four hours. I mean, it, it really could have been a mini-series, we got a million different interviews with so many wonderful people and there will be more, if, we're going to definitely in the next year be releasing more interviews and stuff from it in longer form that people can dig further down into subjects with.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilor Pro Tim.
Uh, always, T. Marie, thank you for what you do. Um, thank you for the work that you do. I think we have to give people their flowers where they're still alive, so thank you, thank you for this. And I think we have to remember, I see this all the time on social media, they take the uh, black and white pictures of Dr. King and the civil rights movement and change them to the color, right? Because we have to remember, this didn't happen too long ago. And so I think we have to remind people over and over again that this happened, so we don't allow this to happen again and to educate the, uh, newer generation coming up, because the way it's happening, they're trying to take this out of our schools. But we need to remember them, let them know that this happened, that you can have the strength to overcome anything that you can't always stand up for us, right? So thank you, and I really enjoy seeing this documentary on Thursday.
I just want to say one last thing.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm so sorry, so sorry. No, so, um, it's really cool too, because a lot of times when we tell these stories about our black heroes, it always ends on a low note, right? Like, they either get killed or murdered or whatever the case might be. My boy won, he won, like, for real, he won. Um, I have not seen, you know, the Black Messiah, uh, the story about, uh, Chairman Fred Hampton yet. I know the story, but it ends very tragically. But I'm so, I'm so proud and so excited at the fact that, uh, Reverend Fred Shuttlesworth, he won, like, he was still around to see some of the benefits and, and, you know, uh, the work that he put in. And so, yeah, that's it, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. We, I, I believe we all look forward to viewing and seeing this story and just thank you for the work that both of you have done. Of course, I'm gonna brag on T. Marie, she's a D7 resident, so thank you. Thank you very much. Alright, so we'll go back to our regular agenda. I almost forgot where we were. Mr. Clerk, do we have any announcements of boards and agency explorations?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we have the one vacancy with the Red Mountain Greenway. Uh, recreational area commission, and that's Council President Pro Tem's position. Um, term expires 1/30/2023, it's a four-year term. That's on the park board.
Alright, thank you very much. We'll turn that over to Counselor Clark for consideration by the park board. At this time, could we hear, Mr. Clerk, a reading of the consent agenda?
Okay, consent agenda starts on page two with items two and three. Uh, on item three, uh, 1, 2, 3, fourth line down at the program, place the language and strike will, and place the language proposes to provide. So the program proposes to provide professional coaching, guidance, and so forth. Page three, we have items four, five, and six on consent. Page four, we have items seven, eight, and nine on consent. Page five, we have items 10, 11, 12, and 13 on consent. On item 10, PP informed of some additional language that needs to be added pertaining to this item. Not read it, but it's also in your, um, suggested notes section on your iPad. And it starts with, after the end of the synopsis, after signing the spreadsheet, you should add, "End approving the request coming from the collaborative group of Children's of Alabama, Jefferson County, Cooper Gray VA, Southern Research, Callahan Eye Foundation, and UAB for waiver of special assessment fee for the installation of the no-smoking zone." Signs, UAB is installing signs in response to City of Birmingham's ordinance number 19159, which prohibits smoking in public outdoor spaces within the health district boundaries. That language should be reviewed on your iPad, so you don't have to write that down. And then we pick back up with, as I mentioned, items 11, 12, and 13 being on consent. Then on page six, we have items 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18 on consent. Page seven, we have items 19, 20, uh, 21, and 22 on consent. Page eight, items 23, 24, 25, and 26 are on consent. Page nine, we have items 27, 28, 29, 30, and 31 on consent. And we conclude the consent agenda with item number 33 on page 10.
Alright, thank you. At this time, councilors, are there any items you'd like to add or remove from consent? Counselor Abbott?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, I would like to add item one to consent on page two. No one objects.
I'd like to ask that we not add that one, because there needs to be an abstention for that item.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
Counselor Tate?
Madam President, I'd like to remove item two off consent.
Right, there's a request to remove item two from consent. Next, any other items, councilors? Alright. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial, and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing, so request. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation indicated with a P will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Councilors, if I could entertain a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Remove approval.
Okay, Counselor Abbott, Counselor Williams. Voting should be open right about now. Counselor Tate Williams?
Yep.
Counselor Tate? Okay, I got you. Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Got you. That vote should be up, Madam President.
Alright, thank you. The consent agenda is approved. If you were here for any items that were listed as part of the consent, those have been approved. We hope you will enjoy the rest of your day, unless you'd like to continue and stay with us for the rest of the agenda. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, please read the first item.
Okay. Item one, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a bold program agreement with Birmingham Business Alliance, under which VBA is part of the city's building opportunities for lasting development program to create a digital network of resource partners and dedicated professionals to provide support to the city's Legacy Biz Program for a term of 12 months, an amount not to exceed $110,000.
Alright, councilors, this item was presented to us with the Budget and Finance Committee, and it's recommended by the mayor. Are there any questions regarding this item? We'll go ahead for the vote. Alright, thank you. Item number one passes. Next item.
Two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a bold program agreement with Burton Well Partners Incorporated, under which Burton Well Partners is part of the city's building opportunities for lasting development program to train new duelers and employee duelers on contract basis to provide Burton Duel Service to low-resourced families from across Birmingham with a focus on geographic priority areas, Eastlake, North Birmingham, and Smithfield, Elton, for a term of 12 months, an amount not to exceed $121,806.
Alright, thank you. Counselor Tate, you asked if this item would be pulled?
Yeah, just a quick question is, um, just wanted to know, you know, their plan of, um, how they're gonna be measuring and also recruiting the people to train for duelers.
Alright, thank you. I don't know if the Joint Chiefs want to take this one. I do know we have the mayor back there. And, uh, so, um, can we answer Counselor Tate's question?
Yeah, Madam President, I think we have the organization lead here that can speak on behalf of their organization. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you mind repeating your question with having trouble hearing in the back?
No, you know, like, how are you gonna track and measure, you know, what you're doing and how are you gonna recruit your duelers for the training?
Okay. Do you want to talk about the training?
Sure.
We can talk about that. Okay. So we've been doing this for 11 years, and we have been collecting data from the start.
So just tell us who you are, please.
Yes, um, my name is Susan Petras. I'm co-director. This is Dahlia Abrams. We're co-founders and co-directors. Um, so we've been doing this for 11 years, and we've been tracking outcomes. The birth duelers that attend the births will, um, collect outcome data, birth weights, gestation. Um, so those are outcomes that we're measuring. We are recruiting trainees. We get people who want to become duelers who find us on the internet. Um, but we are gonna be hiring an outreach coordinator. That's part of the grant that we submitted. Um, so the outreach coordinator will be helping us. We're focusing on all of Birmingham, but we have priority areas of North Birmingham, Eastlake, and Smithfield, Elton.
Okay, so if you want to reach your information, uh, please share with me, because I do live in North Birmingham.
So we, we have been publishing our outcomes, and it's on our website. Uh, the most recent that we have published is 2019, so we keep up with that, and it's available. And we will, of course, present it to you, um, at the end of this period of the outcomes from the grant.
Okay, just wanna, you know, be helpful to spread it, you know, throughout the district for people who are interested.
We would love for you to help us spread that.
Thank you.
Alright, Counselor Pro Tem, you have another question?
And this is for, it doesn't matter what type of delivery is. It can be home births, but can you explain a little bit more?
Right, so we're focused on people who are, um, by definition, high-risk because of reasons of SES, of racism, of all the things that put people at risk. Um, people who have home births are, by definition, low-risk, or they wouldn't be able to have a home birth. And so, our, um, board decided a couple of years ago that we were not gonna serve home births, because we have limited resources, and we want to focus on the people who need our support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, councilors? Alright, thank you very much. At this time, we'll entertain the vote.
Vote should be up.
Alright, thank you. Councilors, item number two passes. Next item.
Alright, uh, item 32 has been requested to be withdrawn. And after that, it's got a whole new business and presentation.
Alright, thank you. Counselor Woods? Yes. Yes. Other questions?
I was able to confirm with the Joint Chiefs, and, uh, we've got a three-week delay.
Three weeks? Okay, item number 32. First, we were, um, requested from the mayor's office to be withdrawn. Now, we're, um, entertaining a, um, motion to have that delayed for three weeks.
Alright, let's just get it before it's first. Let me get, uh, read item right quick.
Yes, sir, thank you.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver agreement with the Birmingham Board of Education. An amount not to exceed $112,727 to provide the following goods and services for the benefit of the students of Birmingham City Schools. The board will assist with the food and security solutions for tutors at Smith Middle School. Allocation is exclusively for the purpose stated. Said funds will come from District One District Funds. Motion, please. Alright, item before, so we can do whatever.
Alright, thank you. Now, Counselor Woods?
I move for a three-week delay.
Alright, three weeks. Three weeks. Voting should be open. Alright, that votes up.
That was quick. Alright, uh, item number 32 has been granted a three-week delay. Thank you very much. Any other items now, Counselor Clerk?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Alright, councilors, at this time, we will entertain your information you'd like to share from each of your districts. Why don't we start with Counselor Moore? You ready down there, Counselor Moore?
Yes, Madam President. Uh, so this week, we do not have any neighborhood association meetings. Uh, Zion City will be having their neighborhood holiday luncheon at Agape Worship Ministries Church this Thursday at 12:00 PM. The address is 328 Robinson Drive, Birmingham, Alabama. Uh, Harman Park will be having their neighborhood holiday gathering at Harman Park Rec Center this Thursday at 4:30 PM. Uh, Monday, Engle Nook Neighborhood Association will be having their neighborhood holiday brunch at 11:00 AM at the Engle Nook Rec Center. Uh, the Woodlawn Boys, Girls, and JV Basketball Teams will be playing at Minor High School tonight. First game tips off at 4 o'clock. Uh, Leaders of Excellence are having their third annual drive-through toy drive, December the 17th, from 10:00 to 12:00 at Willowood Rec Center. You must register on Eventbrite, um, and kids must be present during the pick. Not sure if you all are familiar with, uh, a lady named Ursula Smith, but she's having the brown sugar nut cracker. Uh, she will be having three shows on December 17th and 18th at the Dorothy Jemison Day Theater. Two of those shows are already sold out. Um, so if you have not bought your tickets yet, please go get your tickets. Um, tickets are still available, uh, for the 7:00 PM Saturday show. Uh, the address is 819th Street North, Birmingham, Alabama. Um, yeah, don't, don't miss the show. Uh, obviously, you know, it's a remix of the old classic, the Nut Cracker, uh, with a lot of flavor and culture. So, um, definitely go and check that out. And that concludes our announcements. Oh, well, last, last thing, I'm sorry. Did want to give a big shout-out to the, um, PTA over at Smith Middle School. Um, and Dr. Allen, who is the principal over there at Smith Middle School, got an opportunity to go and, uh, spend some time with parents. Uh, and so, uh, Cora Pettway, who is the president of the PTA over there, just wanted to, uh, tell them thank you for inviting me, and they did an awesome job, uh, just being able to connect with parents and keep them informed of what's going on at the school. So that concludes my announcement.
Thank you very much. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. The next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is scheduled for tomorrow. It is, uh, at 3:30 PM here in the chambers. And, um, also, we have two openings on the Birmingham Planning Commission, and we have not received as many resumes as we expected. So, um, our deadline is December 14th, and we hope that people will apply. The deadline, oh wait, excuse me, I said 14, it's the 16th at 5:00 PM for the openings that we have. You have to be 18-years-old, and you have to live in the city of Birmingham. Uh, neighborhood meetings, uh, tonight Highland Park and East Avondale have both canceled their meetings due to, you know, the holiday season. So they will not be meeting. And, um, I did want to ask of the administration, the, um, there is a zoning case for rezoning the shopping center where the Western Supermarket is, and it went to the Five Points South Neighborhood Association for their approval. But the Highland Park Neighborhood Association is like across the street, and they're very interested in it also. And I was going to ask if we could be sure when we have these cases that are on the border that we suggest to the applicant that they visit not only the neighborhood association that it's in, but the one that's affected also, others that are affected.
Yes, ma'am. And we'll follow up with, um, with our Planning, Engineering, and Permits Department to make sure they communicate that as well.
Yeah, and I know that it's on our agenda for tomorrow's Planning and Zoning meeting, but just as a courtesy, it would be nice. A lot of developers do it, I guess, automatically, but this one didn't, so...
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your help. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Dr. O'Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, wanna start off by, um, saying, Counselor Abbott, we were sorry that you couldn't make it to the unveiling of the Miss Fancy statue in Avondale Park, but we all understand that, you know, moms, um, need to be taken care of first. So, um, it was a good crowd that showed up there, and, um, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you especially to the, uh, family of Ron Council. Um, the, this is a fulfillment of a dream that goes back over a decade, um, to, to get that statue erected. Um, but also, uh, thanks to the Park and Recreation Board for their, uh, participation and cooperation. Um, it was a really good event, and when you're coming south on 41st Street, it's, you know, it's right there in full view, right underneath the, the arch. So really good, uh, addition of public art to the city of Birmingham. Want to let folks know. Oh, yes, um, Counselor Abbott, uh, is reminding me that, um, despite the temptation, I, um, people should not climb on, on, on the statue. Um, uh, it's very much, it's very tall. It's very slippery, um, so you will hurt yourself. So, uh, next up, wanted to mention that, um, the city of Birmingham is going to be submitting an application uh, for a choice neighborhood grant, um, from HUD for the Smithfield community. So anybody that lives in, in the, in the Smithfield community, um, especially College Hills, Graymont, and Smithfield neighborhood proper, um, really ought to find out, uh, about that application. And, and our Community Development Department is really seeking your input uh, as they move forward and prepare that application for submission in January. So the next opportunity that you'll have to learn more about this and to provide input is Friday, December 16th, so this Friday at noon at Smithfield Court. Uh, and again, if you live in Smithfield neighborhood, College Hills, or Graymont neighborhood, this is your opportunity at Smithfield Court to, to go and find out more and provide your input. I'm really excited about that opportunity. Um, if we're successful, it's, it's gonna be, um, the impetus for transformation in, in the Smithfield area. Um, also want to, first, um, wanna, before I announce this, I wanna ask the mayor's office, uh, our chiefs, um, there is some, some remaining work that needs to be done at the Carver Theater, um, with regard to our audio and lighting systems. Of course, earlier, we announced the, uh, premiere of the Shuttlesworth documentary that's gonna be there on Thursday night. So just wanted to... So just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware of that and on top of it.
Madam President, we are aware. We're working with the leadership over at the Carver Theater to make sure that's handled with the contractor that's helping with the A V system.
Okay, all right, great. So yes, unfortunately, if you missed out on R S V P-ing for the Shuttlesworth Documentary at the Carver on Thursday night, that event is completely full, but you can catch it on A P T. on the twentieth. In the meantime, on Saturday, there will be a jazz event. Curtis Lundey and the Emoja Ensemble will be performing Saturday, December seventeenth at seven P M. at the Carver. And admission is free. So please go to the Jazz Hall of Fame website or Facebook page and check out more information on that. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Dr. O'Quinn. Councilor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. The North Pratt neighborhood will be meeting on tonight at six thirty. On conference call, you can join them by calling six oh five three one three four one zero zero. The access code is one two 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 six nine four five. The Ansley neighborhood will be having their Christmas dinner on Thursday, December the fifteenth at six P M. at the McElpine Rec Center located at eleven fifteen Avenue F. Ansley. The next Public Safety meeting will be today at one P M. Join myself and Commissioner Sheila Tyson as we have our Christmas giveaway. We will be blessing a hundred families with turkeys and food boxes, and that starts at nine A M. till eleven A M. at the Tuxedo Ballroom located at two thousand one Avenue D. Three five two one eight. The boxes will consist of onions, bell peppers, regular potatoes, sweet potatoes, celery, cabbage, and a cranberry sauce. Volunteers are needed as well. And immediately following that, we will have our Christmas gathering for District Nine constituents. So that's at the Tuxedo Ballroom as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. Councilor Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Economic Development Tourism Committee will be meeting Tuesday, December the twentieth at eleven thirty. In the council chambers, please make all submissions to India Bailey by Friday, December the sixteenth. If there are no submissions by Friday the sixteenth, then we will cancel the meeting. East Precinct Police Appreciation Holiday Event will be happening also on Friday, December the sixteenth. And I want to thank Clinton Woods Office for partnering with us to show appreciation for all of B P D, specifically those on the east side, obviously while we are at home with our families. Birmingham essential personnel like Birmingham Police, Birmingham Fire. And our inspectors are working during the holidays. So looking forward to spending some time with them during shift change. And that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Councilor Protem?
Thank you, Madam President. For neighborhood meetings, South Tussville Neighborhood Association will be meeting virtually this evening at five thirty P M. They have a new call-in number is seven two zero eight four three two six two nine, and the access code is six eight four six six one zero. The Five Point South neighborhood will be having their meeting slash holiday party this Sunday, December eighteenth, beginning at six and ending at eight P M. At the Hasenger Daniels Mansion, Bed, and Breakfast. The physical address is twenty twenty-eight Highland Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two oh five. Is next to Chick-fil-A in Five Point South. Bring something. I'll be bringing holiday cookies. The P I C will not have a meeting next month. The next Budget and Finance meeting will meet Monday, January ninth at three thirty P M. Submissions are due Wednesday, January fourth, twenty twenty-three by noon. Submissions received afternoon will be placed on the next Budget and Finance meeting. Sixth Avenue Baptist Church will host a Pizza and Pajamas Christmas Party for grades pre-K through fifth grade. That will be December sixteenth at seven P M. And that is at the eight four one Sports Complex located at twenty twenty-two Sixth Avenue Southwest, which is really just across the street from the gas station. I really enjoyed partnering with More than Congress Faith Church. They did their Twelve Days of Christmas. This past Saturday, they gave away scooters, bikes, toys, skateboards. Not only that, but every day they will be featuring a gift certificate for the twelve businesses in the Here It Says Shopping Center. So like Rainbow, Tasty Wings, I think there's a barber shop up there, Chinese place, nail shop. So really just making sure that we take some pride and showcase our businesses in District Six. And lastly, Junior League had their Centennial Gala this past Saturday. They gave greetings. It was very beautiful. It was sold out. So congratulations to Junior League for one hundred years of service and leadership. And there's a video afterwards.
All right.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Madam Protem. These are the announcements for District Seven. There are no Neighborhood Association meetings scheduled for this week. And there are also no bulk trash or rush pickup schedule in the district this week. On Wednesday, December fourteenth, the East Brownsville Neighborhood Association will have a Christmas luncheon at twelve noon in the Mirador Center, and that's at forty-five sixty Park Avenue Southwest, Birmingham, three five two one one. I do want to go back and note, if you have a missed trash pickup or you want to report illegal dumping, please do that to three one one, and you can call them at two oh five two five four six three one four. If you'll call them immediately, they can start to work on that issue for you. And then you can call the D seven office, and we'll help to monitor and escalate if needed. But the first thing, the way to get the really action started on that is to call three one one. So this week, this past week, we had several activities going on in District Seven. I do want to give a huge shout out to the men of Powdery. On Saturday, they provided bicycles, toys, coats, and other items for families there in D seven. So they showered some love on D seven in conjunction with support from the D seven office. So we want to thank the men of Powdery for the work they do in District Seven. We also welcomed a new church and congregation to the Riley Community in D seven. I want to thank the Pastor Jones and his lovely wife, and the members of the Grace Fellowship Christian Church, and they're right there in Riley. So if you're looking for a church home in Riley, I'm sure they'll be very happy to welcome you in. On this coming Saturday, there will be the Annual Southwest Holiday Festival. It will include a parade, will have the renowned, we know, high school band, and will also have the Green Acres Cheerleaders. We will, that parade will start at one o'clock. There will be a turkey and toy giveaway, as well as a food giveaway, following the parade at three o'clock at the Hopewell Baptist Church that's in Hillman Station at forty-eight seventeen Jefferson Avenue Southwest. This event is being presented by the Community First Birmingham, Project Hopewell, Southwest Alliance Association, and in conjunction with the District Seven Office. So we're very happy to participate again and bring some joy to residents in District Seven. We have previously announced this, but I do want to acknowledge that the Cornerstone Revitalization Foundation is now accepting applications for a second class for youth build, that's ages sixteen to twenty-four, and its first class for Cornerstone Workforce Development, ages twenty-five and above. So they're offering pathways to a brighter future, as well as rebuilding our communities through these work programs. So please get in touch with the Cornerstone Revitalization Foundation. That's where Dr. Michael Wesley is Executive Director. And can contact Sherri Lewis at nine two five nine seven five zero, extension two oh six. Again, the enrollment begins and has started already, and the program begins in January twenty twenty-three. At this time, councilors, we would like to allow our speakers to present to us. So Mr. Clerk, if you'll give us the name of our speakers.
Valencia King. Valencia King.
Thank you, Ms. King. How are you? Thanks for your patience.
I'm good. My voice is completely out. With a lot of festivities for this week, and as you see, it's just in and out today. But I'm here on an urgent matter. I'm already acknowledging that protocol has already has been established. But good morning. My name is Valencia King. Currently serve as the Woodlawn Neighborhood Association, as well as the Woodlawn Community President. I am joined with my W N A President Edlett, Jason Avery. Would you please wait? Just wait. Thank you. And I'm also here joined with family, friends, and neighboring communities, leaders, and the Woodlawn community stakeholders on today. We are aware of the procedures of the Z B A Board and plan to attend the zoning hearing, Z B A, for twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight case with budget till on January the twelfth. However, I would like to bring to your attention to the mayor and the city council of our community in unity with the surrounding communities that's taking issue with potential of another extended stay being proposed by Mr. Patel and his business partners in the Woodlawn community. Not only our residents of Woodlawn are unified, but we stand together as one with the ninety-eight, the other ninety-eight neighborhood city-wise, who see these type of extended stay hotels as problematic to the safety of our communities. To visually express the growing support for our efforts, I ask that our allies that is present here today in the city council chamber to please stand. Thank you so much. Now, with that being said, I have submitted some things to you, some letters that we have been starting this process on. Actually, it's a year now, started with December the tenth in twenty twenty-one. Our community leaders and businesses has submitted some letters in. And I just wanted to bring it back to your attention about the motels and the hotels that we are having issues with on First Avenue North. It's a growing issue. We having problems. And we would like to have our council, all nine of you all in the city, to help us as we attack the issues that is, I would say, we're growing, but it will be a back, two back steps or ten back steps backwards if we don't address this issue at hand. I noticed that our crime rate has increased, prostitution has increased, and several other items that has been increasing around these hotels that is harboring these illegal activities. And just like our neighbors in Arundale, we are asking for your support. We're asking for guidance on these matters. And I just really do appreciate all that you all do in the community. And thank you, Ms. Attorney King, for everything that you do. And that's all I have to say for today.
Thank you. Thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. Of course, we will have the zoning hearing that is scheduled coming up. Give us some direction here, Councilor.
Well, I thought I heard you say that this was coming before the zoning board of adjustment?
That, yes, it's.
And the city council has no control whatsoever over the zoning board of adjustment. I know Ms. King probably told you that. And when you go to the Z B A meeting, if you don't agree with their decision, then you have to go to, is it Circuit Court? Have to go to Circuit Court within two weeks, I believe it is, maybe fifteen days you get. So although we can help you with, you know, our verbal support and all that, we have no control over the Z B A, so.
Yes, ma'am. I'm aware.
Now, the zoning, we have some, if they ask for rezoning, then we have some control.
Yes, ma'am. I'm aware of that particular case. But we still have other issues that we're dealing with pertaining to those motels and hotels. And this is just one of the main issue that I know we have to go to the Z B A and handle. But there are some multiple ones that I know for sure, I'm thirty-nine years old, and we've been dealing with this issue for almost twenty years, and probably before me, about those motels and hotels on First Avenue North. And so now that we have established policies and procedures with the Birmingham City and the nuisance properties and things of that nature, I think that this is the time now to address those issues at hand. And I'm just willing to work with whoever I need to work with to address those issues because just recently we had two overdoses, I mean overdoses, in our community. And our children from Woodlawn High School had to walk by seeing a body laying actually in the yard. So it's an ongoing issues, and it just need to be addressed. And so I just wanted to make you all aware of where we standing at as of today. We got good things that's coming to Woodlawn. I mean, a lot of beautiful things in twenty twenty-three that is moving and shaking and already in plans. And what we don't want to do is to turn away those positive things because I think that putting positive things in our communities would change the outcome of the violence and the, you know, with health issues, so.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Councilor Moore?
Yeah, so first off, I just want to say thank you, Madam President, for coming and sharing that information. I know that I've lived in Woodlawn since two thousand thirteen. And this is something that I have had to deal with for several years since I've been there. And I know that, like you said, there have been folks who have been there long before me who tell me stories about how bad things used to be, right? How it used to be even worse. You couldn't stop at a stoplight without somebody pulling at your door because they think that you're trying to be engaged in some type of drug deal or some type of solicitation for, you know, sexual activity. And so the residents have, you know, come together with the business community. They've come together with the churches in the area. We have nonprofit organizations that are really working together to push Woodlawn forward. Push Woodlawn forward and serve as a model for how each and every neighborhood in our city can operate and really be a gem. And things like this, as you said, could set us back, could set the momentum that we've put in place back. And really, it's a safety issue. I know that for, I know for a fact that some of these hotels have definitely been the ground zero for a lot of prostitution and a lot of drug activity that spills over into the residential areas. And we have to deal with that. We have to deal with that. We have to be the ones to bear the brunt of that. And so we asked, we asked residents to, you know, to join the neighborhood associations. We asked them to not complain and to get involved and to, you know, raise their voices and, you know, to partner with folks. And we have a neighborhood that has actually done those things. They've done everything that we've asked them to do. And so now they're just asking that we come through and support them and to help. And so obviously, anything that, you know, I need to do, I will definitely do that. And I just ask that, you know, the council, as well as the rest of the city, also partners with us to address these issues that have been longstanding as well.
Thank you. And I believe administration wanted to just respond as well.
Yes, ma'am, Madam President. Oh, Ms. King, had a really good meeting last week with Ms. King and Mr. Avery and members of the Neighborhood Association. And we've teamed them up with several members of the administration, our city attorney, the Office of Community Development, our Planning, Engineering, and Permits Department, especially our Code Enforcement Team. So we're really aware of the issues, and we're going to be walking extremely close with them. So as well as your office, counselor, counselor, and for all of the members of the council. So just wanted you to know that we are in lockstep with them. And thank you for your advocacy. They keep us well in the loop of what's going on.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Ms. King, and thank your associates who joined you today. I was in Leadership Birmingham class last week, and we talked a little bit about what the community voices and what this time that we set aside in council meeting means to us as councilors. And so I want to thank you in the way that you presented this information to us and made us aware. It's a matter of awareness. So thank you so much. We appreciate your diligence and following the rules on how we do that. Thank you so much. At this time, councilors, I would be remiss if Council Clerk is not here, but I do want to thank those members of the Five Points West community. They had their annual tree lighting ceremony on Saturday. So when you pass by Five Points West, you see the beautiful tree lit. We want to thank Council Clerk, Dora Sims, president of that community, and those six neighborhoods that were out there to ensure that that tree lighting took place. And one last item. On Saturday, I brought greetings for the N A R A B. This is the Black Realtors Association, and these are our black realtors in Birmingham. They had an awards and ceremony, and they honored both nonprofit and business sector. They had an awards and ceremony, and they honored both nonprofit and business sector for the support they give to that association. I did mention in my remarks that we had approved fifty million dollars on housing trust. Listen, y'all, it's ten million dollars, okay? And I realized, there's a lot of excitement about this, and I'm like, I've got back to my thing, and I looked at my notes. So it's ten million dollars, but it is the Housing Trust Fund that the city of Birmingham, so there was so much interest, everybody kept dropping me their cards and doing all kinds of stuff, so I hope they won't be mad at me when we come back and say ten million. But thank you to that organization for all they do. They do a lot of financial literacy and courses on home ownership, and we know this is the backbone of our communities, is putting families into these homes, building on these vacant lots, so thankful to the work that they're doing. At this time, we have anything else? Yes?
I forgot one thing, um, there's a holiday party at the Tissville Library today at three thirty. Thank you.
That Tissville Library, they're just rocking and rolling over there. I mean, really, truly, when you look on social media, they're always doing things, so that was the most deserved recognition today. I just want to keep talking and talking, but let's go ahead and end this. All right, thank you, Council's meeting adjourned. Thank you.
We're here for the Five Points West Community Tree Lighting and Christmas Parade, and this is a longstanding tradition in this community. It was started by the late, great Alma Dennis, whose legacy of leadership we are all a part of. You know, this is a great tradition, it takes a lot of work, and I'm really proud of Dora and her team for always bringing us together as a community form.
It's always a treat to be here in the Five Points West community, why I represent the Green Acres community as part of District Seven, so I'm here joined the Councilor Carol Clark, and Ms. Dora Sims, and all of the neighbors here in the Five Points West community.
And that is to just bring together our political leaders and the community and everyone, so they can just share with the citizens a little thing about what's happening here in our community, to just let them know there are some good things happening right here in Five Points West.
And we're just really glad to have this opportunity to bring some Christmas cheer to the community and just remind people, you know, that community is what the season is all about, sharing love and good times and good food with friends and community, so we're all about it.
And for more from the Birmingham City Council, follow along with us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Stay safe, Birmingham.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. We're here at the Haven, it's the Junior League Centennial Celebration, Wild Junior League, one hundred years of service and leadership. I'm so honored to be a member of it. Junior League does great work in the community, whether it's with our kids, education, human trafficking, you name it, so I'm here to give greetings on behalf of the city of Birmingham, but this is such a great time to celebrate women.
As a member of the Birmingham City Council, something that I think about lately is how we get warm up in such women and positions around our councils.
This is really just celebrating women in general, the fact that they have been decades of work and progress and accomplishments that has been done in Birmingham. Junior League is a national organization, but the actual Birmingham chapter has been one hundred years, actually, Junior League has been one hundred years, so it's so great from what they've done for women's voting rights, to any sort of reproductive rights, to helping our schools, mentoring our kids, the mental violence, you can really name it, they're really big on service. Junior League is such a great organization, they change lives, empower the communities, and I just want to say congratulations both getting Junior League.